Items. Is there any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Would we approve? The consent items. Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would the clerk record the vote, please?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Grooby?
Aye. Number two, since there is no items removed, that we can skip that one down on information items. These are the reports from the different department heads. If anyone has any questions, you can ask them now. These are information items. We'll go next to administration, number four. Under administration, number A, consideration to authorize city manager and staff to develop guidelines for creating a Durant Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
Madam Mayor and counsel, tonight before you is for your consideration to form a Durant Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. I believe with our new senior center, which we just closed on today officially our property, that now that we have to insure and have all the liability for, which is, it's a good thing, though, for us. It's going to be a couple of months before we make the transition and getting all the stuff moved over there. It's been brought to my attention, there's a group of folks that believe that we need to have, like a lot of cities, a senior citizens advisory committee that could come before the council, make recommendations for programs and other things within the senior center itself. And before we jump too far deep into it, it's kind of like we did with the task force. I wanted to come before the council before we get into all the details and at least get the approval to start the guidelines and the creation of it with some recommendations, and then bring the final product back to this body.
Sounds good. Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move approval to authorize the city manager and staff to develop the guidelines for creating the Durant Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk record the votes, please?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Grooby?
Aye. Motion carries. Number B, under four B, consider approval of renaming the Durant Senior Center to the Ron Cross Activities Center honoring Durant Senior Citizens. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor and counsel, before you tonight is this particular action. It was requested with Gay Cunningham when she started the campaign to go out and look for the monies to purchase the new senior center. There was a sizable donation made by the Cross Family Foundation in the name of former councilmember Ron Cross, who also served in other various volunteer functions throughout the community. She's asked that the, the new senior center, as an honor for their sizable donation and to his legacy, be renamed the Ron Cross Activities Center.
Is there any further discussion? Then I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion, a motion we approve, item four B. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk record the vote, please?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Grooby?
Aye. Motion carries. Number four C, consider award of bid for library HVAC system and controls repaired to Ferris Electric for one hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-seven cent without exclusions.
If you've looked at the proposal, we're in year eight. The air conditioning and heating hasn't worked since day one. They've always had issues. We had someone come in and take a look at it, and it's far worse than we imagined. So we've been putting on expensive Band-Aids over the last eight years, and we have hit a wall.
The air conditioning system is actually controlled through computers, which, as you can imagine, makes things ten times worse. It's supposed to make it better, but it doesn't. And we brought in, we solicited bids, tried to get somebody local to come take a look at it. Nobody wants to touch it. I found someone who would. He came in, brought some people in from Dallas to look at the wiring for the system. We have five rooftop units that are wired directly to a computer downstairs that are controlled. We've had multiple issues. They found that the wiring wasn't done correctly to start with. That's why we keep overloading the panels in the units themselves. And we do not have smoke detectors in the VAV boxes. So the fire marshal was brought in, and if this isn't taken care of in a reasonable amount of time, he's given us till July, that we could possibly have to shut down or find some alternative. So this is to replace all of the wiring, so it's not just the units themselves. It's pulling out all the existing wiring, putting the correct size wiring in, a whole new computer system, so that it will be, it will actually function, but it'll function like it should in 2019. It can be controlled from any computer that has access from a cellphone. And we will have someone local who is responsible, who will come when called, and will guarantee it, I think, parts, two years, one year, two years. The people that originally put the system in, the rooftop units, went out of business before it got finished. So that right there should tell you the situation we've, we've been in. And we've tried all we can. And although this isn't budgeted, we have a maintenance reserve account that the city has been putting money aside for in compliance with the grant regulations for the last eight years. So we do have money to cover that for a situation like this. So we do have the money.
Do I have?
I have a question. Is Ferris bonded?
Yes.
And this is coming out of the maintenance reserve account?
Will not be out of the, the, of our budget that comes out of everything else. There is enough money in there right now to cover it and still leave a sizable amount.
Another question. Who's going to supervise and inspect?
Marty Cook has, he's over Public Works. He has stepped in with the fire marshal, knowing what's going on. I don't know what happened in 2011. I can't even speculate, but it will all be done correctly between somebody supervising the building and then somebody supervising the, the fire end of it.
Now, do we need somebody else, perhaps?
No, I think who we have now, and that's all I'm going to say, is it's, it's going to be there. They're aware of everything.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me, in this particular case, what does without exclusions mean?
That means if they get up on the roof and say there is a motor blown out in one of the units. Right now, we do not have functioning air conditioning in the south end where the community center is. So that means the children's programming has about a thirty percent of one of the units that's working, and the main unit that supplies the air isn't working at all, and they've not been able, they took a look at it and they said, just in glancing, it could be from the computer system, but it could be something else. So if there's any work that has to be done on the units themselves, that will be extra. So if they get up there, and like I said, most of the units have two motors, one that runs all the time and another that kicks in if it's in excess, so. But two units are, actually, one is the only one I'm concerned about. The rest work, work okay for now. So the main part of the library, which has three units, we have air. We're too cold because it's not responding to the temperature controls, but they work. Five, which is the main one for the theater and the meeting room where all the children are this summer, is not cooling at all. So it, it could go up. They won't know till they get up there.
So is there money in the maintenance reserve account to take care if it goes up?
Mm-hmm. And because there is no one local who is certified and qualified to do the computer work, there are actually two guys coming in from Dallas under Ferris to do the work, which is probably what happened in the, the first place, either from Dallas or Oklahoma City. No one here works on these kind of systems where you have to put in computer controls.
But Ferris is local.
Yes. And, and he knows how urgent this is and also knows that this isn't something he's going to put in and walk away from. We'll hunt him down.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions?
Should we not perhaps amend the wording to include the fact that the library reserve fund is on the hook for the bill? This doesn't really say. It's kind of vague.
Well, I mean, we, we can amend the motion, but, I mean, typically, typically, we don't put that on. I mean, it's typically-
You don't say what fund it's coming out of.
What fund it's coming out of, but it, it is, yeah, I mean, we have, I believe, in the past eight years, we've socked away about eighty thousand a year.
Yeah, you're over six hundred thousand.
Yep.
And it's for instances just like this, yeah. And this is a requirement of the grant.
Ms. Toniby, would you be coming back, I guess, before the city manager and the public works director and the council? If indeed there are additional costs to the actual HVAC equipment, the, the air conditioners? You're, you're saying this is for the, all of the wiring, et cetera, and the-
Getting the main guts working again, yes.
The technology end of it, but not the equipment. At what point do, will we know, will we not know about the equipment being in?
If I call Philip tonight, it'll be three weeks before he, if he can order equipment in the morning, the earliest will be three weeks before they get in there and get started.
That's Ferris Electric.
Uh-huh. And if they-
So we got to do that before we know if the equipment's going to operate or function as it should.
Four of the five units are functioning to a certain extent. They're not coming off and on according to schedule. They're running all the time, which is costing us money for our electric bill.
That's the technology issue.
That, that is. My main concern is not having the smoke detectors working, so.
But I guess, back to my question, that additional cost would come back before?
Depending on what it would be. If, you know, those rooftop units, it would probably be seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars to replace all of them. So I know I've got three for sure that are okay. The fourth one seems to be working. I can come back. I would like to not have to, but if it's something small like it's been in the past, say, one of the motors is out, one of the blowers is out, or maybe a fuse is blown, then I feel like we can take care of it. I know we have a threshold.
I'm, I'm just, I think, maybe to be more clear, if it's over like the city manager's-
Yes, that's what I was about to say. If it's, if it's over his threshold, then yes.
It would, it would be handled the same.
Right.
Yeah.
And just maybe one other point of clarification, too. I think it's important to point out that you did research through a bid process and actually had two or three-
We had three noes.
Um, vendors that could not work on this, so the bidding process was really not circumvented, as I understand it, and even though we only have, had the one local to-
You only have one person crazy enough to bid for it, so yes.
But I, I think it's important-
It is, it is a huge undertaking, a huge.
I move approval of the bid for the library HVAC system to Ferris Electric for the amount stated and without exclusions.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for number four C. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Grooby?
Aye. Motion carries. Number D, four D, consider approval of agreement between Francis EVC LLC and the city of Durant for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at no cost to the city at three hundred West Evergreen and Law Street parking lot. And I believe that gentleman's here.
Yes. Mick Walsh is here as representative from Francis EVC LLC. Mick approached the city a couple of months ago, was in the process of acquiring some, I believe, some federal grants to install these stations around the state of Oklahoma. He came to city hall and inquired about some locations, some strategic locations that would, you know, hopefully attract folks from the Oklahoma City Metro and the Dallas Metro up here that have the electric vehicles to come to our downtown areas, shopping, come to our local events. So before you tonight is an agreement between Francis EVC and the city for installing the electric charging stations at absolutely no cost to the city. And Mick, if you want to explain a little bit more about the program?
Sure. Originally, this was based on a grant from the Volkswagen fines when they lied about their emissions. This, that, we got a lot of those awarded to us. This is based on a tax incentive, tax credit from the Oklahoma State Income Tax. We've been able to monetize that, and so we can use that then to finance it, so it's no cost to the host, to the city at all. We will supply all the equipment, install it, operate it, do everything. Our intention is there be no risk, no liability, no cost at all for the city. The upside for the city is it attracts people who drive electric vehicles. Once these are installed, those will appear on all the databases. You could Google it. You could use apps like Plug Share to find where the, where the, the charging stations are. And you, as you might imagine, people who drive electric vehicles are keenly aware of where their charging opportunities are. And if they have a choice between going somewhere that has a charging station to eat dinner and someplace that doesn't, they'll probably go to the place that has a charging station. Just like you don't want to be caught out in the middle of nowhere with your car and not have a gas station. You don't want to be out in the middle of nowhere with your electric car and not have someplace to plug it in. The charging stations would charge a car in twenty minutes to sixty minutes. Plenty of time for people to get out and shop and eat, enjoy downtown Durant.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, I have.
Yes.
What does it cost?
To the city? Nothing.
Well, no, I mean, who's paying for the electricity?
We do.
Oh, you, you pay for it?
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring in the electricity.
I mean, from now on, you're going to pay for the electricity?
Correct.
Just curious, what does it cost to charge, to go two hundred miles, or, I mean, on the average electric rate?
Right now, it's about a third what it costs, or a fourth of what it costs to use a gas car, a gas powered vehicle. So dollars per mile, it's a third or a fourth.
So are you saying there will be a meter on that, that the city provides, and you'll pay that account? So you'll be-
We can separate it out.
It'll be separately metered, completely separately metered. It'll be like a separate business entirely. It'll be a separate meter. We'll pay to have that service brought to the location. We'll have that all built out. And, and we'll pay for the electricity.
Does your company retain ownership of the equipment forever?
Yes, sir.
Do you replace it periodically or?
Yes, sir. And upgrade it as needed, if it seems necessary.
I guess the bottom line, too, is we're providing a service about doing this, but not participating in any revenue stream then. But we're providing a service that is a growing, a growing need.
Our incentive is to get more folks coming here, spending their, their money here and collecting the sales tax here, so. And currently, there's only, and I went out and looked at it, that the Choctaw Nation has a couple of stations in the- You probably drove by a few, yeah, at the parking garage, but that's primarily used for the employees. So there's really no other access for Durant. I think I looked, the nearest one closest to here was up in, was it McAllister or something? I forgot where it was at.
Yeah, I believe that is the case. Now, there are a few of them across the state.
Across the border into Texas.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Tesla has installed a few of those. The problem with the Tesla ones is only Teslas will charge at them. These charging stations will accommodate every vehicle on the road now, so there's-
I have one further question. Tom, you've reviewed the contract. I, I guess it's a contract, but you've reviewed that?
I, I have.
In order?
It is.
How many cars can plug in at one time?
One.
One? So if somebody plugs in and they get busy, they go to eat, spend two or three hours, they're plugged in, and somebody else is waiting there?
Well, what we do for that is the, the charger knows when the car is fully charged, and the rate goes up three or four times at that point. So if you've got your electric car plugged in to charge it, and you go off and do something, then you're aware of how long it's going to take to charge, because otherwise, you're going to end up paying a premium, a penalty, basically.
Okay, so-
So if you stay plugged in and your car is already charged, you're paying a lot more money.
Okay, well, I mean, I have no experience with electric cars. So, so their, the car owner is going to be billed for the electricity?
Correct, yeah. Their credit card or their app, or there's a lot of different ways they do that.
There's an incentive, just like there's an incentive at Lowe's to not sit out there and go inside for half an hour while your car's-
Is, I'm sorry. Is it something that we could add to if we had a lot more electric cars?
Yes, absolutely. Probably not at no cost in the future, unless the tax credit is extended.
Got you.
Talk to your legislator.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it fits a new Harley-Davidson electric motorcycle.
You know, I, probably, I don't know for a fact, though. I should find that out.
Any other questions?
How will we be able to promote this, Tim, to, or the publicity to let folks know? How will we do that?
Well, the app will be a big value to it, because the folks that own those cars, nearly all of them have an app to tell you. Like you said, a lot of states, I'm sure, probably down in the metro area even more, that they, they, they know. It's just, and they're same thing. Right now, there's some natural gas cars out there, too, and they all have apps. I had employee in Oklahoma City that had a natural gas, and he made sure that he knew where the next station was, so.
I have one more question.
Sure.
So the customer, is it like when you fill up with gas, you know what you're paying? Will it reflect the amount on the?
Yes, I'm not exactly sure how it-
Charging unit, but they'll, when they put the credit card in, they'll know twenty dollars. They'll know they're paying twenty bucks. Okay.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions?
I move improvement, approval, approval of the agreement between Francis EVC LLC and the city of Durant.
Do we?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham? Mayor Grooby?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mick.
Number four E, if there's no objections, we're going to skip four E and I'll put it down under the public hearing, under number A on the public hearing. So at this time, number five, we start the public hearing. And number A under public hearing is public hearing regarding resolution twenty nineteen dash sixteen, request approval of fiscal year nineteen twenty budget.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. The scene, we do have our budget in front of you. It is in compliance with statutory requirements for notice to the public, timeframes for approval and adoption, and just sort of highlight some of the, the elements that are in this year's budget. We do have, you know, we're maintaining our emergency responses, our streets and our public facilities. We are trying to strengthen the economy in, in programs that retain, attract, and help expand businesses within this budget, and outline some of the major infrastructure needs that we're hoping to continue to work on and enhance. So, you know, we're, we're still heavily relying on sales tax. We do have two percent sales tax that goes to the general fund, and then our other funds for sales tax are dedicated. We do then use our utilities through the Durant Utility Authority to help subsequent fund, subsequently fund those, those services, as well as other public services that sales tax does not fully fund. Our overall budget this year is sixteen million, for the general fund is sixteen million, one hundred and seventy thousand, seven oh five and eleven cents. The other capital improvement funds that we're incorporating with the utility authorities. We've got our sales tax for the economic development, the Southwest, or the university quarter cent sales tax, the one percent sales tax for infrastructure, lodging tax, or cemetery operations, committee care fund, special nine-one-one tax fund, or home insurance risk fund. IT is an interdepartmental fund. The drug sports, sports complex is actually funded through the quarter cent sales tax. We have the drug enforcement fund, library fund, holiday lighting fund that this year we're looking to actually utilize for new Christmas tree and some lights at city hall to be able to enhance our, our Christmas decorations here at city hall. And it's a recommendation from the mayor, so thank you. And we have our insurance fund, beautification. This year, we're not budgeting any CDBD grants. It's not that we won't probably be getting and pursuing CDBG grants. We just don't have actual fundings that we know of right now. So as we get those funds, where we do apply for CDBG grants and, and know what those are, we'll bring those back, authorize the expenditure of those funds, recognizing those, and do the budget supplement. This way, we're knowing what we're going to get when we get it, and we're just not guessing and hoping what funds we're going to get and projecting that we're, we're going to have those funds if we don't get them. Then we have the utility thinking fund, and then our community center and library, which is actually part of what we're going to be using to expand for. That's the fund that we'll be using for the HVAC system. As sort of a quickened outline, we did have an opportunity to visit and go through workshop with, with council a few weeks ago. And hopefully, we answer more specific questions in more detail, but this is just sort of a, a highlight that it is the resolution that the council is adopting for, for the seating that gives the authority for the expenditure, the recognizing the authority for receiving those funds and the authority to expend those funds within those accounts at the department level. It also incorporates the new council policy that provides for any line item transfer, or department transfer over fifty thousand dollars comes back to the council prior to approval or for approval. Any questions? And I'll sit down and we can have the public hearing. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to speak during this part of the public hearing on the budget? Any of the council have anything to say? Any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Then we will close this portion of the public hearing, number A, and I guess we vote on this, don't we? Okay, I need to call for a motion.
Yeah, that was closing five A, going back to line item E within the administration. And then that's just adopting the budget itself. Don't know if you all need anything else or have any additional questions now that we've closed this. This is the action item.
The resolution.
Of approving the resolution.
Right, we're going back to four E. Consider the approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash sixteen, adopt and propose budget for fiscal twenty nineteen through twenty. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion and a second. Would the clerk record the vote, please?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Number 5B of public hearing, consideration ordinance number 1879 PC 2019-09, a rezoning from R3 to I1 for property located at 2925 North First Street.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, this is just a rezoning. If you could see the location map that we've got up there for you. The hatched area is the property that is in question. What's going on with this is the applicant owns the property further to the south, that mini storage facility, and so business is really good, he wants to expand, and so he's rezoning so he'll be able to expand up into that other piece of property. This, if you look at the zoning map which follows, it is presently zoned, the R3, which is around there as well, but if you see the light industrial right there, that's what will be expanding up. So because it's adjacent contiguous to a zone district already, that R1, or excuse me, I1 zone district, this would not be considered a spot zone, so this would be a zone that you could do with that, even though your future land use plan doesn't show it for that, it is consistent. And so our recommendation for staff is for approval. Planning Commission also voted on this, and they recommend approval for this as well. We did not receive any comment prior to the meeting in opposition or during the Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is here tonight. If you do have any questions for the applicant, too. So, thank you.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion from the audience? Anybody have any questions? Are there any discussions? Any discussion? I think that's three times. Okay, the public section, the public hearing is closed, and we'll call for the vote. Call for the motion, I'm sorry.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 1879 PC 2019-09.
Do we have a second?
Section one.
Yeah, section one.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. Number C under five, 5C under public?
Madam Mayor, we need to have a motion on the emergency on section two as well.
Okay. We call for the emergency clause. Do we have a vote, a motion?
I make a motion to approve section two.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk record the vote, please?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we go to 5C, public hearing for closeout of 15421 CDBG-ED 12, Community Development Block Grant, Economic Development Infrastructure Grant, C-2013-05, in the amount of $500,000 for the Walden Drive Industrial Roadway Improvement, serving Pharmicare OK of Durant, Inc., facility operations to create 15 new jobs located at 102 Walden Drive. Ms. Becca.
Aye, good evening. Thank you. The City of Durant received a $500,000 CDBG EDIF grant, and it was to complete Walden Drive up to Pharmicare. And then we came back to the table because DIA worked with the company and decided that the whole one mile of Walden Drive needed to be widened and made into a nice industrial roadway. So DIA contributed $630,000 towards that project, and the roadway was successfully completed with about $53,000 under budget. And the company invested almost a million dollars and exceeded their one-to-one required company investment towards the project. The company is still thriving and creating employment for our Durant area. And yes, they did create their 15 jobs that met the requirement for the grant. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
And I would like to make a comment. Without our streets department, expertise of James and his crew, the roadway would not have been possible, so I include them as well.
Is this the normal amount of time to close this out? That road was finished three years ago.
No, it's not. The grant actually expired in 2016, and I had to complete some information from the company, and that's all been wrapped up.
Is there any further discussion?
And?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Right. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Anyone wish to speak? That closes the public hearing portion. Could we call for the vote, please?
I don't think you have to vote on the public hearing, do we?
I thought you had to have a, to accept the, you don't have to have a...
Well, no, in the next two items, we need to table those. There was a glitch with the Oklahoma Grant System, so I will present those two items at the next council meeting.
Are you talking about six, one, and six-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But I wanted to go ahead since we posted the public hearing to go ahead and conduct that.
So we need to move on to D?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Oh, and then if everyone has signed, there are two sign-in sheets. Marty, I think, is taking care of that, so if everyone would sign, please.
Okay, now we're going on to 5D. Public hearing for the closeout of 16246 CDBG-ED 14, Community Development Block Grant, Economic Development Infrastructure Grant, C-2015-05, in the amount of $525,000 for the Country Club Industrial Roadway Improvements, serving the Overland Corporation, Inc., Overland Materials and Manufacturing Asphalt Plant Facility Operations to create 18 new jobs located at 868 Country Club Road. Ms. Becca?
Yes, thank you. And the city received a grant in the amount of $525,000 with DIA's contribution of $500,000. The grant, the project was about $50,000 under budget, and the company invested, they were committed to investing $600,000, and they significantly exceeded that with almost $800,000 in their company investment for their equipment. And that company is still thriving and maintaining about that average of jobs at the asphalt plant.
Was this the street that was built in front of?
I'm sorry. It was Country Club Road. I failed to mention that. It is the full length of Country Club Road from Highway 78 to McLean, and that roadway was also widened, made into a nice industrial road with the curbs and gutters. Yes, and it was built to serve specifically Country, I mean, Overland, but now with all the expansion, the other companies are benefiting as well.
Okay, thank you. Is any other discussion? Any council members wish to speak, or anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience? I guess no. Then that will close that part of the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll need to vote.
Well, and then table those two items as well.
These two items are also...
Yes, and I'll present.
Okay, items one and two will also be tabled.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that concludes our public hearing part of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. Okay. Okay, we're ready for citizen comments, and we have three people who signed up, and one of them, Jim Thorpe, is Jim here? Gene Mason, or Gene?
My comment tonight is on the letters that we've been receiving, consider, on the insurance that's offered for the water and sewer lines that belong to the individuals. I don't necessarily mind getting the letters periodically, offering insurance, but what really upsets me is after, I think it was the third letter, I got a letter that was a reminder that we had not taken advantage of their offer, and I resent that. A lot of the elderly could assume that that's a bill I forgot to pay. And I think something, that needs to be stopped in some way, and I don't know how. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Nancy Ferris?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Ferris with Three Valley Museum, and I have with me tonight Greg Phillips, who is the president of the Durant Historical Society. And we are here to visit with you all to thank you again for partnering with us in bringing the Wall that Heals to Durant. On May 9th through the 12th of May, we had a fantastic event here that affected a lot of people, and I thought that it would be interesting to you all to know how that went down and how many people that we had that visited our city, and just a few facts that you might be interested in knowing. Because everyone in this room and everyone in this city was definitely vested in making that event a wonderful one. So just wanted to share a few things with you. We initially hoped that our event would attract 10,000 visitors to see the Wall that Heals, the replica of the Vietnam Veteran Memorial in Washington. At last count, we exceeded our expectations by 1,646. So our total was 11,646 people came to that wall out on the hill. And that was approximately 1,600 students attended who had never heard of the wall and had very little knowledge about the Vietnam War or our veteran population. So having partnered with the City of Durant, the Bryan County Emergency Management, the Chautauq Nation Emergency Management, the Durant City Parks and Recreation Staff, our Durant Police and Fire Departments, the Bryan County Health Department, we built a plan that was designed to cover every possible catastrophe, including inclement weather, which we had plenty of for the six days that it was here. We covered handicap parking and accessibility, health-related emergencies in case there was dehydration, first aid needed, or even counseling, and motor vehicle management on how to park the buses and how to keep people safe as cars and pedestrians were working in that same area. We had security 24 hours a day by the Durant Police Department and a volunteer staff of 24 hours a day, and golf cart rides for those who aren't able to walk or stand for long periods of time. I feel that due to that strategic planning of these very resourceful and dedicated individuals, this event was very successful from the logistics point of view. There were no injuries or mishaps among the visitors or from the 200-plus volunteers that helped to make that a success. That is something that I was very adamant about, very concerned about, was that we could pull all this off with a big crowd and no one would be hurt, so I was very, very proud of that. As far as the economic impact on our town, I concluded from visiting with restaurant owners and business people in the downtown area that sales were up during the time that the Wall that Heals was here. I know that the site manager bought a set of tires at Castile's for his truck while he was here, so that nail strip we put out worked. I know that they used the Chautauq KOA for some of their staff to stay in. I know that they stayed in local hotels as well, so just from those people alone coming into town, you know, made some difference. That one of the speakers from Okeen, who was the fighter pilot, or the pilot of the Huey helicopter in Vietnam, he flew over 1,000 missions in one year. I know that they came here and stayed the night, the day before, and did some things around Durant. So just by, you know, they were no different than anyone else who visited, so we are quite sure that it will make, that it made a huge economic impact on our town. I feel that bringing the replica of a national monument here, our entire area benefited through education and healing. The process that was brought on by this amazing exhibit is one that we will, that I think that we will see unfold in the days and weeks to come. We offered an opportunity to citizens of southeastern Oklahoma and north Texas to see the Wall that Heals, who most likely will never have the opportunity to travel to Washington, DC and see it in person. So for that, that was a great thing for our city to do. Many, many stories were shared at the wall, many tears were shed, and many hearts were touched. I discovered that you didn't have to be a veteran to have a story. If you lived during that time, your life was somehow changed by the events of that day. Volunteers agreed to share what they had experienced at the wall during the rapid meeting, and as a keeper of history, the Three Valley Museum videoed their testimonials. Most volunteers were enlightened to learn that tears are still flowing, burdens of grief, pain, and suffering are still abound for our Vietnam veteran population some 50 years after the fact. I truly believe that because of the generosity of the city and the compassion of its people, the burdens, the burdens of the folks who came to visit the wall are somewhat lighter today because of the tears that were finally, they were finally able to shed and the fact that they no longer carry their pain alone. Was this event successful? I say yes, it was. For me personally, it was more than I had, much, much more than I had hoped for. As far as attendance, yes. In spite of the rain and the cold and the lightning and James Dalton pulling us off the field the day we were trying to get it put up and taken down, and the area tornadoes, the wall kept coming and the volunteers stayed put. They stayed strong. The logistics of it, was that successful? Yes, it was. It went off without a hitch. Was there bodily injury? No. So yes, we were very successful there. Education, yes. Students learned of a war they knew virtually nothing about. They saw a military ceremony paying homage to the heroes whose names are inscribed on the Wall that Heals, men and women who died to promote democracy and freedom. Many adults were enlightened because the Vietnam conflict was barely mentioned in their history classes. For those of us who lived during that era, there was plenty to remember and plenty to observe through the tour of the museum that was there on site. Community involvement, you bet. Seeing the citizens of Durant and the surrounding area come together to give their time, their... come together to give their time, their energy, and their resources to ensure that the wall was looked upon with respect in an effort to honor our fellow countrymen was really a sight to see. Economically, yes. According to my informal survey with the shopkeepers, I believe the businesses were busier during the days that the exhibit was in the city. At one time, we calculated that each person who visited our town would spend approximately seventy-five dollars each in eating or if they stayed over or whatever. So you can kind of do the math there and know that there was some money spent here during this time. I feel that there will be a long-term impact from this event. Those from out of town who may not have known what Durant had to offer will be apt to return again to stay and shop here. We know that visitors came from South Texas, from Kansas, from Lawton, from Arkansas, and all around our local area. We feel that advertising within a hundred-mile radius prompted local traffic and drew the out-of-town crowd that we had hoped for. We received lots of questions about what Durant had to offer in terms of tourism destinations and some about jobs. So the Board of Directors of Three Valley Museum and I wish to thank you all for your incredible generosity toward bringing the Wall That Heals to Durant. I believe the social and economic impact from this one event will be recognized throughout our city for many years to come. So a very heartfelt thanks to you, Jerry Tomlinson, who was the mayor at the time when we first started this event, and to you who picked up the ball and ran with it, and all of you, even though that some of you are new on the bench there. I know that you all knew that it was coming and your support was very much recognized throughout the whole time. So I cannot thank you enough. And for those people who have things to say about our city workers or if you ever hear any negative things about them, send them to me because I'll, you know, I'll take up for them. I think that we have some of the most ingenious, resourceful, and hard-working guys. I cannot tell you that there's not one thing that I went to them with and asked for their help that they didn't immediately try to make it happen to make that a good event. I never saw any eyes rolled. I never saw anyone walk away in a huff. It was just, what can we do to help? And that was the promise that you made when I first came to you. And I just want to thank you so very much for you and for the guys that were on that team that made that all happen. So thank you.
May I?
I'd just like to comment. Nancy and Greg, and really all those folks that you mentioned. Some of them are here this evening. It was all the things you just referenced. As much as anything, it was an emotional feeling for a lot of people.
Still.
And yeah. But on behalf of this council and this city and all, again, all those people you mentioned and this community, thank you guys for what you did in making that happen and all the things, again, that you just said. I mean, that's a testimony in itself.
It is.
But thank you for what you did and that board. And I'm not only grateful for me, but for all of us that we had this opportunity and that you made it happen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Greg, Nancy, thank you so much. I think Jim Thorpe is here.
Hello. My name's Jim Thorpe. On the same matter that we were just getting to talking about on the healing wall, even when Jerry Tomlinson was mayor back then, he even sent me a text and said, would we consider helping them bring the healing wall in? And so during Tourism Authority Board, we knew that people would be coming in from out of state, would be eaten here, would be staying at motels. And so we gave these people twenty-four thousand dollars to help with that healing wall. So that's one of the things the Durant Tourism Board helped you with. And I guess that was a substantial amount of that, right? So... And we were grateful to do that. What I was wanting to talk about today, and I know it's coming up. I know pretty soon, whether you've let it out or not, y'all are going to have a city airport manager out at the airport since you're going that way. And what I was going to talk to you about, and I talked to Marty about that the other day, it's a different kind of business than any of y'all ever know. I've had a airplane out there since nineteen ninety, a Cherokee Six. And so I'm very experienced with that. I'm very experienced with hotels and restaurants and how you can bring business in. But an airport is a different type person. You can literally advertise and promote an airport and not get very much off of it at all. The reason is, let me just put it this way. Let's say if you had a small plane, and you're going from Tulsa and you're going to Dallas. And let's say you had to stop over and find a place to get some fuel. The fuel runs on that between four eighty, it does, six dollars a gallon. Well, mine burns sixteen gallons an hour. Times about five or six, that's between ninety to a hundred dollars an hour. You can imagine what these jets do. And so what we do as pilots, you know, you have people going, learning to train out here, and so they're going to be around here. But as a whole, a pilot is not going to divert off his course. When they get up in the air, if you're on their course... And I used to go to Denver a lot. We'd go snow skiing out in the mountains up there. And I would start here. And my midpoint would be liberal Kansas. Guess what? I didn't go to Topeka, Kansas. I didn't go to anywhere else. I went to liberal Kansas. Because when you're spending that much gas, you are not going to get off course. Okay? So you can advertise this all you want. But I'm telling you, pilots fly in a straight line. And every time I went to Denver, I would stop and literally liberal, gas up, and go again. And so, you know, advertising the airport is not going to be very exciting to y'all. You're not going to bring very much money in. The ones that bring the most money in here is Choctaw. And they'll come on weekends. Sometimes what y'all need to do is go out and look at the registration book inside the airport. And inside the airport, sometimes between Monday and Friday or Sunday and Friday, you have maybe five, ten people that will sign in and tell you where they're going. And that's it. Now, they do on weekends, on a, say, a Saturday or Friday night, you have maybe twenty-five people coming in to the airport FBO lobby. Guess what? They're pulled in by the Choctaws. So we can't bring them in. The Choctaws is the ones that bring them in. So what I'm telling you, you know, you can advertise this all you want to, but unless this is on a line for somebody to go, we don't go and go on a scenic tour with those things. It costs too much money. Then you have to have an annual every year. And the annuals can run from, on a small plane, around a thousand dollars. And it can run up to thousands of dollars on a jet or something like that. So you know they're not going to play around in the sky when they're doing that. So that's what I'm saying. You can advertise and say, come to Durant. But if they don't have it, really the only thing they're going to come to Durant for is maybe, I'd say, the casino. When I asked Marty the other day, how many complaints have you had on Duane in the last few years? And he said, zero. And we haven't had any. He's done that good. The only thing you can have at the airport is service and information. That's it. If they're coming in, you got to have somebody at the front desk, service. You got to have somebody taking out your plans. And as long as you can do that, you know, it'll do good. But as you consider that, you know, you can go around to the pilots. I know my time's almost up. You can go around to the pilots, and you need to check on them in the next couple of months when you're looking at this, and ask them, have they taken care of me? You don't want to fix something that's not broke. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. If there are no objections, we're going to recess out of the regular meeting and move over to the Utility Authority. A motion to recess out of the regular council meeting.
I'll make a motion that we recess out of the regular council meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. We will now recess out of the regular council meeting. And it let the record show that it is seven oh five. And we will call to order the regular session of the Durant City Utility Authority. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Morris?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Here.
Chairman Groby?
Here. Under consent items, we have two items listed under the consent items. If anyone wishes to pull either of these items out, you may do so to be voted on separate. Does anyone wish to pull one of the items out? If not, do we have a motion that we accept the consent items?
I make a motion, we accept the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. And we have the information items under number three. And that's it. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn out of the Utility Authority?
Make the motion, adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. We now move into the Durant Airport Authority. It let the record show that it is seven eight, seven oh eight PM. And we call to order the Durant Airport Authority. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Morris?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Here.
Chairman Groby?
Here. Looks like we're all here then. We have one consent item. So I guess if no one has any questions, we'll move on. Looks like that's it. So do I hear a motion for adjournment? Pardon? Oh, we got to approve the consent item. Sorry, guys, getting too fast.
I make a motion, we approve the consent item.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we adjourn out of the Airport Authority. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye. We will now go back and recess back into the regular council meeting. Do we have a motion that we go back into session in the regular council meeting?
Make a motion, we reconvene in the regular council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we reconvene into the regular council meeting. Would the clerk please call the vote?
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye. We are now back in the regular session of the City Council. And we're on item seven, which is executive session. And we have items A through I. And I would like to make a motion that we recess to go into executive session. Would... Do we have a motion?
Point of clarification, Madam Mayor, it's A through L.
Thank you. A through L. Thank you. Do we hear a motion?
Make a motion, we recess into executive session.
Second.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. We're now recessed. Does anybody need to take a break?
Are we all done?